Good evening, everybody. Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals, very unique meeting, May 5th, 2020. Welcome, everybody. Again, very unique. I think it's possibly the first ever being done virtually. And we're joined by several people. I just need to do a roll call for the record. I am the chairman of the committee, Tom Brady. And if everybody on the committee could identify themselves, starting with Mr. Phil Riley, please.
I am here.
Mr. Jack Perry is also here. Patrick Mulverhill is here as well.
Hello, Mr. Brady and members.
Hi, buddy. And Scott Murphy.
Present. Good to see everyone.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting an update from Ramonda as we speak on my telephone. I just... Yeah, I know. Jack, can you hear me, buddy?
Jack Perry, can you hear us?
Give him a second just to reset it. He might be bringing his wife back in to help him out. There he is. Jack, can you hear me, buddy?
What's that?
Can you hear me all right?
I can now. I couldn't before at all.
Okay. I think you're back to normal now. So just one other thing, if anybody has a cellphone, I mean, feel free to text each other. And I have been notified, but Ramonda is, if anyone listening and wants to email a question or comment, they can send them to the zoningboard@norwoodma.com, all one word. Norwoodma.com, zoningboard@norwoodma.com. Just for the general public.
And check that, that would be norwoodma.gov.
You're right. Ramona, I assume that's accurate. So yeah, let's go with that. Zoningboard@norwoodma.gov. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, David. So anyways, if we could move on to the first case, I'll read it out loud and then we'll go from there. Notice is here, but we're going to go with 81 Winter Street, Dave Hearn, if that's okay first?
Yeah, they're all together, but I'm happy to take them. They're all of the same issues. And I'm happy to take them in whatever order you want, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Of course, misplaced my... That's okay. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeal of the Norwood Town Hall, of the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on the request of 4B Realty LLC, case number 20-05, with respect to property located at 81 Winter Street, 34-33, excuse me, 34-36 Walpole Street in a general residential district. Public participation may be accessed by contacting the ZBA through the email that we said earlier. I'll read it again. The zoningboard@norwoodmass.gov for anyone listening. This application requests a special permit under section 5.2 and section 6.1.12 of the zoning bylaw to allow a conversion of three buildings at first 81 Winter Street and also 31-36 Walpole Street from mixed residential use, I'm sorry, mixed residential slash commercial use to residential only, with each building to have four residential units and no commercial uses to be carried on at the premises pursuant to section 5.2. Second section is relief if required from the parking requirements applicable to the premises pursuant to section 6.1.12 and any such other or further relief that the ZBA may determine to be appropriate. With that, David, I have, I don't know if you want to hold it up if you have it or if it really matters. I believe we all have a copy of the notices and the affidavits for the newspaper, which I believe it dated April 6th. I don't have them in my hand, but April, is it April 6th and April 19th? Is that correct?
April 9th and April 16th, Mr. Chairman. And I believe there was a subsequent, Ramonda would know if there was a subsequent publication, an additional one because the change of type of meeting from a live meeting to this virtual meeting. So the second notice was amended, and I believe there was a third notice published, but I don't have a copy of that. I think Ramonda would know the answer on that because she made the arrangements.
Yeah. So there was one notice on April 9th that had the meeting room for town hall, and then we changed it as of the 16th, April 16th, to have the go-to meeting and then a subsequent third notice, which was on April 23rd, which had the go-to meeting as well. And all of the members have a copy.
Okay. And I have that now as well. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. So David, we have the application. So if you want to present your case, be my guest, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and member of the board. For the record, my name is David Hearn Jr. I'm an attorney with offices at 470 Washington Street here in Norwood. I'm here this evening representing 4B Realty LLC, which owns the several properties known as numbers 81 and 87, Winter Street and 34-36 Walpole Street. These are properties that actually connect to each other, and the board has the benefit of the plan that we filed that shows the property can be entered from either street and you can proceed by car or on foot through the properties from Walpole Street to Winter or from Winter to Walpole. There are four buildings on the site. Three of them were built about 1962. The fourth building dates back to about 1900. And number 87, Winter Street, has three residential units in it. It was originally built as a three-family, and at the time that it was built, three-family dwellings were allowed as a right in the general residence district where this property is located. Number 81, Winter Street, has four units in it, three residential and one that has been used for commercial purposes. It has been a medical or dental office for a number of years until very recently. The building at number 34, Walpole Street, is listed as a mixed-use, commercial and residential. It has four units in it. And the older building, built about 1900, number 36, also has four units. It is used and listed as residential only. All of these buildings are listed on the assessors' records as having had multifamily use, and two of them, number 34 Walpole and number 81 Winter, are also listed as having commercial uses, and they have been taxed accordingly. And that goes back a number of years. What my clients want to do now is to eliminate the commercial uses and switch over any commercial space to residential use. Now, they don't propose any changes in terms of the layout of the site. They don't propose any changes in terms of the dimensions of the buildings. These changes relate to actual uses. And they're hoping to eliminate the commercial use, which would normally not be allowed in the general residence district, and simply have these converted to, from existing non-conforming uses with three, at least three units recognized, four by the assessors, and extend or expand the non-conforming use to allow the continued use of a fourth unit, as they've been used for many years. The, as I said, the assessors have carried these as four-unit buildings, with the exception of number 87, which isn't really before you this evening. It's on the cycle. We're not looking for any relief with respect to that. And the history of these properties goes back, these particular buildings were built about 1962 by Frank Simone. The building permit shows they were permitted as three dwelling units, three-family homes at that time. So they existed legally back in 1962 when multifamily was allowed in that district. Somehow or other, and I don't know how this happened, my clients don't know how this happened, but along the way, there were four units built. And those four units have been used since the early 1960s. As I said, in two buildings, they've been used, one unit each, in number 34 Walpole and number 81 Winter has been used for commercial purposes. We want to eliminate that, and I think this falls under the provisions of the bylaw, section 5.2, when we're dealing with non-conforming uses, that if the board can authorize the change of a non-conforming use, either by change of the use or by an extension of the use, if the board finds that doing so would not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use in the neighborhood. Now, I know that there was an issue, my clients appeared before you back in late 2018. I was not involved at the time, but I've discussed it with them and seen some of the records. And they were, they went before you with similar requests, but what came up at that time, it was an issue that came up about a 1973 decision of the zoning board, where the building inspector, his decision was upheld when he issued a cease and desist order regarding a medical or dental practice on the property back in 1973. I don't know what happened, and my clients don't know what happened after that, other than the fact that the use continued. And the uses have continued, the commercial uses, in the nearly 50 years since that case was decided. You know, I think it's instructive to keep in mind that Frank Simone, during this time, the 60s and 70s, was building a lot of properties in Norwood and was regularly dealing with the building department as an enforcement officer. And I think that there was a problem, that it would have come to light more than it's come to light to us at this point, when we have a copy of a 1973 decision. What I'm suggesting is that somehow or other, a resolution was reached and the four units continued to be used from the 60s through the 70s, when the question was raised, and then going forward. However that happened, and whether it happened, again, we don't know, I think this case can be framed as simply asking for the, asking for the board to grant relief, to extend the non-conforming use. Three units are definitely in each building, non-conforming uses. They were permitted that way, they were built that way, they've existed that way, they have been taxed that way for 50-plus years by the town. And I think the board can find that the continued use of all four units in the three buildings I'm talking about, of each of those units, can continue without any detrimental effect to the neighborhood. In fact, by eliminating the commercial use or the office use that's been going on for a number of years, eliminating commercial uses generally eliminates or reduces traffic. And particularly the dental office that was operated in Winter Street, people come and go, several people, often in the course of an hour. You eliminate that if you allow that to be used for residential purposes. Also, the residential use is more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The adjoining property at number 40 Walpole Street is a multifamily building and has been for many years. My client's property is a multifamily. The rest of the neighborhood is single or two-family, for the most part, until you get down to Washington Street, and then the condominiums down there at the corner of Winter Street are certainly multifamily, as well as the former nursing home. These are all an immediate neighbor. So we're asking the board to find that the, these uses, the extension of the use, the non-conforming use that has historically been there and that was permitted, be allowed to continue with an extension to allow a fourth unit in number 34, also recognize the fourth unit at number 36, and to allow the use for residential purposes of the fourth unit at number 81 Winter Street. I did put in a request for relief with respect to parking, Mr. Chairman, in the application, but we show on the plan that we filed that we have adequate parking. At the time these buildings were constructed, only one parking space was required for a residential unit, regardless of the number of bedrooms. So for the buildings that are, should at minimum be recognized as three units, only three spaces are required. For the additional units that we wish to have recognized as residential units, those would require three parking spaces. We have those spaces. In fact, we exceed the parking requirement, I believe, by one space. 21 spaces required, we have 22 spaces on the site. So, Mr. Chairman, that is essentially my presentation. We're happy to take any questions from the members of the board. My clients are sitting, as I said, in the far end of the room from me, and if need be, I can ask them questions. I'll go offline to do that.
Okay. The one, the one thing for starters is, can you take that map down of the, of the plan? Please?
Ramonda has that, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Just so we can get back to seeing, thank you for whoever did that. The only, the one thing I do ask there, could you just identify if they're at the table with you? Could you identify the clients behind the 4B Realty LLC?
They're not visible, but Bob McDonald and Matt McDonald of 4B Realty are here. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to include them.
No, that's all right.
Matt McDonald shows up on the screen, but he's muted and doesn't have any video going.
Yeah, that's all right. I actually forgot to ask in the beginning myself, but I appreciate, appreciate it nonetheless. So, all right. So we'll go with questions for starters, and if we want to start with Mr. Riley first, if that's okay, that would be great. Phil, if you have any questions.
Thank you. David, how long has it been since the dental offices were functioning there?
Dr. Aaron just retired this March, March of 2020. Officially closed his office then.
That, that having occurred, are there any more commercial uses currently being made on site?
We had commercial uses at number 34, and that was also a dentist's office. Dr. Sterns was in, at number 34 Walpole Street.
If he's still functioning?
No, they're not presently there now. No.
So there are no commercial uses currently being made?
That's correct.
Now, you said that originally, some of these units were set up with three units? That's correct, is it?
The building permits from 1962 show that number 34 Walpole Street, number 81 Winter, and number 87 Winter were built as three-family dwellings.
And for how long have there been four units functioning on site?
Well, Mr. McDonald's been involved with this property at least since the early 90s, and all that time, there were four units functioning in each of the buildings.
Are there four units currently functioning?
Well, Dr. Aaron has retired, so nothing's functioning there. That's one of the units they want to convert to residential. And Aaron's office is empty, and that, they want to convert that to residential. And there is a fourth unit in the, in the existing, number 36, the old building, that they want that to be recognized as residential also. It's been used, but, as an office, but it has not, it's currently not used, and this is the opportunity to convert it to residential.
But I take it you want to have four residential units in each of the dental offices that were formerly, obviously, used commercially?
We want, we would like to have one, no, each dental office would be converted to one residential unit.
Oh, to one? Okay.
Yeah. So the result would be that 34 Walpole would have four residential units. It has three residential now and one commercial, and that's how it's assessed. Number 36 Walpole has, is listed with, by the assessors, as four residential units. And number 81 Walpole is, 81 Winter is three residential, one commercial. It's listed with the assessors as four units. So we just want to switch the, any commercial units in those three buildings into each single commercial unit into a separate, single residential unit. Not increasing...
I take it that would apply to 81 and 34, is that correct?
Say that again, please.
That would only apply to 81 and 34 Walpole, is that right?
Those have the commercial. Number 36, number 36 doesn't have, well, number 36 has had an office. It's listed only as residential use. It had had an office that was used, and its use is non-conforming because the, well, the three-family, we'd like, we'd like to extend the non-conforming status that exists with respect to number 36 to a fourth unit. That's essentially what we want to do in each of these three buildings.
Oh, so in both, it's so unclear, in both 36 and 34 Walpole and 81 Winter, what you potentially want to do is to add one more residential unit, so you would have four in each rather than three in each?
Add one in place of formerly commercial.
In place of the commercial, yeah.
Right. So we're not increasing the number of units.
Do I understand? It's in place of the commercial.
To match the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Jack, if you have any, Jack Perry, if you have any questions, please.
Yeah, I have a couple. The first one, David, is are they tearing down the existing structures?
No, Mr. Perry, we're not changing any of the structures. We're not tearing anything down. We're not expanding the structures. These are really just internal changes in the use of the interiors of the, of the buildings.
Okay. And on parking, David, as you know, that's always an issue all over town. What are you gonna, what are you required now after these units are constructed? And are you providing the required? Or are you looking for relief on that?
I did put in a prayer for relief in case anybody thought we needed it, but frankly, Mr. Perry, we have, based upon the requirements when the buildings were built and based upon the conversion of a proposed residential unit in the three buildings we're talking about, we have one more space than required by the bylaw. We exceed the parking requirements. So we're not doing any new construction externally, we're not changing the parking areas, we're, we're providing adequate parking and parking that conforms to the, to the bylaw.
All right. So you're not looking for any relief on that at all?
I don't think we need it, Mr. Perry, but I put it in out of an abundance of caution.
I don't like, we don't think. I like to be positive, David. You know that?
I'm positive we don't need it, Mr. Perry. I hope you agree.
Okay. All right. Those are my concerns at this time. I'd like to get a copy of the site plan, though.
We filed several copies of the site plan with the board. I'd leave it to your assistant. Ms. Morgan may have, won't clear the copies are. I filed enough with the board so that everybody would have a copy.
Okay. And did it show the existing parking?
It does show the parking. Right. It's a two-year plan. One is the, the site, and the second is a parking, one is a plot plan, the other is called the parking plan to show all the parking spaces.
Okay. All right. I'm sure I'll find it in my pile of papers here. It's not, I have your phone number.
I was afraid of that.
I do have one, David, that was a plot plan done quite a while ago, and they do show the structures and driveways. It does, there's no parking plan shown on it.
Mr. Perry, there was a second, there was a second sheet that shows the parking plan that we filed with the application. It's up on the screen.
I have a pile of papers, but what I'm looking at doesn't show that, but I'll take you word for it, and I will go through the rest of my papers.
Mr. Perry, the, that parking plan is on the screen now. I think Ms. Morgan just put it up on the screen for us.
Oh, okay. Okay. And I can't read it on the screen, but as long as there's one that's available, I could always look at it. That's fine. And I say it was done by Paul Broadmark, what is it, Paul Broadmark, I don't remember his name. An old, old engineering guy. All right. Those were my questions, David.
Thank you.
All right, Jack. Thank you. Jack, one other thing too, and this might just be the case with me, the, the site plan and the parking issue, not issue, I'm sorry, the parking plan and the site plan for that particular prop, for that particular, this particular case is actually with my other case. So I found the site plan and the parking plan on the, on the other, on the next case we have, so it might be mixed in. I know in my, my case, it's mixed in, the two cases are reversed, but no, they're both right there. So you might want to just look through both cases and you might find that plan that Ramonda put up on the screen anyway. So, but we definitely have a copy of it nonetheless on record, so if you need to see it, we can definitely get it to you. So, anyway, so moving forward, we'll jump over to Pat Mulverhill, please.
Thanks, Tom. David, good evening, and good evening to the McDonald family. Just by way of history, did Mark Schubert had a problem with this last application, did he not?
I don't know what the problem was. I know that the 1973 case came up as a, as a concern, but that's what I'm told by my clients, I wasn't involved in the matter a year and a half ago.
Because if memory corrects me, I, last time that the McDonald's were in, I had personally no problem with removing the commercial component of these buildings out of it. I think it was a question of legality, whether we could do what Mr. McDonald wanted to do last time, based upon the history of the property. I don't have a record of a letter from building inspector or former building, now retired building inspector Schubert, but I could take a look at the minutes of the previous meeting, but I was pretty, I'm pretty confident in my belief that I was okay with the fact that the commercial could be removed from the, from the building, but it was a question of whether could we put a residential unit back into the unit, in its place? Does that sound familiar, David?
I'm sorry, if you could repeat that, I was just confirming with my clients.
So, my question, and again, maybe you can correct me or we can find the minutes of the, the letter, is that I had no problem removing the, the commercial units, the dentist's office, and I think at the time, I didn't have a problem with, you know, putting a one-bedroom in its place. And before I get into that, what are the units that you're proposing to put in there? Is it a one-bedroom or is it bedroom?
Well, I put on the parking plan two bedrooms because that would require us to have three parking spaces and to make it clear that we had those spaces that are required. Gentlemen, are you, what are we looking for? One, two-bedroom, we'd prefer?
Yes.
Yeah. We're thinking of two bedrooms, and, and that's why we've provided three parking spaces for each of the three units we're talking about.
Okay. Because I mean, on its surface, I don't have a problem removing the commercial entity, but I'm, I've got to check the notes and I've got to look at the minutes of the last meeting because for some reason in my foggy head here, I kind of recollect that it was, it's almost like we couldn't act on this because there was nothing approved that was in the buildings currently.
Well, I think the answer to that, Mr. Mulverhill, is that they were approved and permitted, the three that were constructed in 1962, were permitted as three-family dwellings. That was a use that at that time was allowed as a matter of right. It since then became a, it has become a non-conforming use because we no longer allow three families in... allow three families in the, uh, general residence district. Now, a way to look at it, uh, Mr. Mulvihill and the other members of the board, is that when the three-family use became non-conforming, we then have to go to the board and ask the board for relief to make any change in that non-conforming use, and that's what we're doing here. We're asking the board to give relief under section five point two of the bylaw, and to make a finding that the change from the use we've had there for a number of years to the use that we propose, all residential, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's been going on there. And I think that's the question the board needs to reach. Mr. Schubert, I don't, uh, my clients are telling me that they had no particular negative comments from Mr. Schubert. I asked them how they ended up going to the board in two thousand eighteen, they said they were told they had to go to the board. Um, and I think this is, this property is probably a little bit unusual, but, um, this is a-
Very unusual. I guess my, my, I guess the biggest question, and I, and like I said, you know, I'll look at the minutes of the last meeting, I, I think I was a proponent of, of what Mr. McDonald proposed, but there, there was a lot of questions of how did it become non-conforming?
Well, it became, I'll tell you, Mr. Mulvihill, it became non-conforming when we changed the zoning bylaw sometime after nineteen sixty-two to prohibit multifamily dwellings in the general residence district. This is just one more non-conforming three-family or more in our town. Uh, our sections of our town are full of three families and four families and more that would not be allowed, but were allowed when they were built. That's how they become non-conforming. They were legal when built, and they have become non-conforming as we've changed the zoning bylaw over time. So that's the issue that I think you can take under section five point two and decide, is the proposed use going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing or previous uses that have been made? And I suggest to the board that you can make that determination in favor of the applicant because it seems to me that a residential use is less detrimental to a neighborhood that's a residential neighborhood than a commercial use is in a residential neighborhood.
Could the commercial, excuse me, David, could the commercial use reopen right now if I was, uh, Patrick Mulvihill, DMD? Could I go in there and open that office?
I think you could.
Good old hood. We don't want to do that.
I don't know what hand in the drill, but, um, we'd, uh, I think you could, Mr. Mulvihill, I don't think we've lost those rights, but we're willing to give those up and just convert it to a use that matches the neighborhood, residential use.
Thank you, thank you, David. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mulvihill.
Okay, and, uh, Pat, just to follow up also, uh, I'm, I'm being told by Ramona that she, she doesn't recall, I, I don't recall this case coming before us before, so I, I don't have a recollection of it, and obviously we're limited on what we have access to, you know, in terms of the records and stuff at the moment, but Ramona is telling me that she doesn't recall a letter from Mark, um, with any negative overtones on it.
Okay, all right, I may be wrong, I may be wrong. That's fine. Now, like I said, I think I was correct in saying that I was probably for it, but, uh, the question of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, getting rid of the commercial, you know, there's a lot of questions how the commercial entity got in there to begin with, and, you know, forty years ago, I don't know, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. All right, uh, and next is Mr. Murphy, please, Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Hearn, I, you know, I thought about this earlier, and then Mr. Mulvihill kind of drove it home. You, you had said this was a three-family, approved as a three-family, all of these units were, yet was it ever approved to put a residential, excuse me, a commercial, uh, unit in as well to make it four units? Or is it only really supposed to be three units, which is non-conforming, which we could extend, but is the fourth unit, was that ever approved by anybody before?
I have to say, Mr. Murphy, um, to the, the building department records that I've seen, the building department records that my clients, uh, may have seen, uh, the records of the registry of deeds, I spent a lot of time checking the records of the registry of deeds from the, when, uh, Mr., when Frank Simoni first acquired this property in nineteen sixty-two forward to see if there was any decision that dealt with that. I couldn't find any. But that's not to say that somehow or other it was allowed, I don't know. Somehow or other, the assessors became aware of it and taxed it, and somehow or other the building inspector in nineteen seventy-three had a question about it, but then never pursued it beyond the zoning board decision in nineteen seventy-three. It was never pursued, it was never enforced, uh, and we don't, the people that might be able to answer those questions, many of them are not around, often the old records are not around, available to look at. Um, so if we put that aside, if we treat these units, these buildings as non-conforming in their status as three families, which they certainly qualify as three families, that's how they were built, and that's, that was allowed as a matter of right nineteen sixty-two, all we're asking you to do is to allow an extension of that non-conforming use to a fourth unit that already exists. This will not change the exterior, it will not really change the, uh, use or the intensity of use, in fact, it may reduce the intensity of use of that property in the neighborhood because we're eliminating the commercial uses that have been allowed. And I think you just look at section five point two, and I think you can decide there is no substantial detriment, uh, to the neighborhood if you allow what we're requesting. That's how I see the case, Mr. Murphy, and I think that's how the board can see it.
Uh, thank you. One other question I have for you, Mr. Hearn, is, uh, with the parking, since you're asking us to revisit a prior non-conforming use and extend it, that we're extending a non-conforming use, does that mean you had, the parking has to be brought up to, up to speed here as far as the number of units required for the other, uh, the number of spaces required for the other unit, so do we need three per unit now instead of the one that was required in nineteen sixty-three?
No, because, uh, the only thing that's changing from what was originally permitted is the addition of an, of a fourth unit in these three buildings that we're talking about. And so what does that fourth unit require? It requires, um, uh, three, uh, three spaces as a two-bedroom unit. Um, the rest of it is grandfather. And that's, that's really what, um, you know, you don't, you don't revisit every parking requirement, you have to look at the incremental change on the site, and if you look at that, uh, I, I think you can say we exceed the required space. Uh, we've, we've functioned all these years with twenty-two spaces, um, twenty-one were required. Um, when it was a doctor's office or dentist's office at the time, back in the early sixties, uh, the requirement was three spaces for each physician or dentist in the property. So, the doctor and the face, they had that problem. Um, I think, Mr. Murphy, that adding, uh, one two-bedroom unit to each of the three buildings increases, requires us to produce nine parking spaces, which we have, on top of the, um, uh, twelve that we needed for the four buildings as three family units. Uh, these are apartments also, Mr. Murphy, I might point out that if you think about the type of use that's made of these, the families that live there, they're living in a situation in an apartment, uh, where they, uh, are often very close, want to be very close to the public transportation, and the actual move is not the three parking space for each one of these. It would be a waste of space, and it would be an unnecessary requirement, if that was in the, but I don't believe it. So we'd put the request in for relief under, uh, section, uh, six point, uh, one point twelve, if the board felt it was necessary, and my, uh, to anticipate if that question comes up, I'll simply say that we haven't had a parking problem in the past with the uses that have been going on there over the years, and we don't expect we're going to have a parking problem if we eliminate any commercial uses from the site and change them over to residential. We're not increasing the need for more parking, we have plenty of parking, and I think the board would find that based upon the fact that it hasn't been a parking problem in the many years that there have been commercial uses going on there in conjunction with the residential uses. I think the proof is in the history of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
And I'm at the end, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, uh, the only thing I had, David, Paki actually answered a, a que, rather, question that, that I wanted to know the number of rooms per unit too, I, I wasn't clear on that. Um, so I think I'll go back. Sorry?
We are proposing two bedrooms, and that's how we called it out on the parking plan too, uh, Mr. Chairman, just to be fair on-
Yeah, you clarified that, I appreciate that. I think, I think everybody hopefully is clear on that as well. So, the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Ramona, unless anybody, does anybody want to follow up? I'll start with you, Phil, you have any follow-up questions?
I have one question for David. Uh, when and how did the commercial use become non-con, non-conforming?
Well, I, I think it may have, it's possible that it was non-conforming somehow or other from the very beginning. Um, I'm not suggesting for the sake of this presentation that it is conforming, that it was conforming, um, and if it wasn't conforming ever, then it probably can't become non-conforming. What I'm saying to you is that we, i- in order to grant the relief that we're looking for, I think you look at these buildings as, as being permitted for three families and, um, being used as three families, which was an allowed use at the time the buildings were constructed, and you, uh, now non-conforming and say, we'll allow the extension of the non-conforming use, and whether it was used as, um, uh, a, uh, commercial use or anything else, it's not necessary we reached that issue. How they got used, how they became used as a commercial, we don't know. Uh, the people sitting with me, uh, one of them's been in control of the property, responsible for the property since, uh, nineteen ninety-one or so, um, but they don't know how that happened, and I don't know that we'll ever really get that answer. I can't find it in any of the records I've looked at. So, um, Mr. Riley, I think that, um, I, I think it would be quite fair to say that the commercial use probably was not allowed. Now, there was a time when a physician or dentist, not a resident of a property, could maintain a professional office in a residential zone, but that required a special permit back in the early sixties. That's in the bylaw from either nineteen sixty-three or sixty-five when I was looking at it. Um, so, uh, you know, for it to be, uh, to exist, it normally would have required a special permit. I can't find a special permit. Maybe there was one, but I can't find it, but that doesn't make it non-conforming anyway. So, uh, we're starting, I'd like to think we're starting with, from what I've said a few times already, and that these are non-conforming three families, we want to make them non-conforming four families, with the board's blessing under section five point two.
I think the problem, David, that I'm having, and maybe this is what Paki was referring to, I don't know, but under section five two, you're asking us to change a non-conforming use, and it sounds to me as though one of the uses that we're changing is the commercial use, and it seems that we therefore ought to have some evidence that that commercial use was in fact non-conforming, since that's basically what we're changing.
I think, Mr. Riley, well, I think you can look at five point two point one, and the opening paragraph of five point two, which talk about change or extension not being substantially more detrimental. So we're not proposing under, we're not proposing what's described in five point two point two, which is changing from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. I think we can look at five point two point one and treat this as an extension of the multifamily use. If, uh, the existing multifamily use, existing non-conforming use, treat it as, uh, that, and, and you can allow the, uh, relief under five point two on the basis of that subset, not subsection five point two point two. That's, that's how I would look at it, Mr. Riley.
You know, uh-
And I, like you do also, I could convince you.
So, no, so I, in effect, uh, you're saying that since those units that had the commercial use also had three residential, that we should look at it simply as extending those three units to four and, uh, simply not consider the fact that it was partially commercial?
I think you can ignore, I, I think we don't need to, I, I think we can ignore the, the commercial use.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean.
Yeah, the multifamily use by itself is non-conforming, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, moving forward, Dave, one other question. Could I just get it on the record from you or your clients? The existing residential units that are in these buildings, are they all two fam, uh, two-bedroom?
Uh, how many part, no, uh-
There are, uh, uh, two one-bedrooms, one, two, three, five.
We're, we're counting, Mr. Chairman, we'll be right with you.
Okay. Four, one bedrooms.
Yeah.
And-
Are we including number eighty-seven in this discussion?
Yes. Yeah. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Can you do me a favor while you're figuring this out? Do you mind listing them by address, just so we have it for the record?
Um, try to list them by address, sir.
Eighty-seven has two, two, uh, three two-bedrooms.
Eighty-seven, which is not part of what the relief we're requesting, but does, is on the site, has three two-bedrooms, sir.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one has-
Two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom.
All right. Uh, Mr. Brady?
I'm so proud.
Number eighty-one has two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom.
Yeah.
Two one-bedrooms.
And eighty-seven has three, three two-bedrooms.
Correct. All right, number thirty-six Wallpole has two one-bedrooms?
And two-
One, one two-bedroom, and we propose a two-bedroom to go with it, in the office. In the former office, we propose a two-bedroom, and number thirty-four-
One one-bedroom and two two-bedrooms.
One, one bed, number thirty-four Wallpole is one one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms-
Correct.
And we propose a, uh, another two-bedroom.
You're basically proposing a, a second two-bedroom on thirty-four and thirty-six Wallpole Street.
Thirty-four, thirty-six, and number eighty-one. We propose on all of them, we're proposing two bedrooms.
I like that. Another two, I knew, okay. All right, no problem. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, so I'll move on. Uh, if I could, do Jack Perry, any follow-up, Jack?
Uh, just one question, uh, on the existing footprints that are there, and I know there's been mixed use, and I think that's ancient history, and not to waste so much more time on that, are the structures that are there, the footprints that have been created, is there going to be any increase in the footprints?
No, nope, no change in the footprints.
Satisfied with that, Jack?
Yeah, that was it. I just wanted to, like I said, I think it's probably a good idea that, what's going on, but that's all.
All right, good, thank you. Paki, uh, Pat, any follow-up questions?
Yeah, um, I'm just trying to do a little CSI work here, uh, David, and I, I understand you've done your fair share of research on the property, but in nineteen six, what, what did you say the building was built?
Uh, three of the buildings were built in nineteen sixty-two. The fourth building, number thirty, number thirty, uh, thirty-six, uh, was built about nineteen hundred.
What was the zoning for that area back in that, at that, you know?
General residence.
Well, three families aren't allowing a general residence now or then, was it?
It was then, yes.
It was?
Absolutely, Mr. Mr. Mulvihill, yep. As a matter of right.
Now, right, and when did, when did that zoning change from, uh, being allowed to not being allowed, you know?
Let me see, I have excerpts of the bylaws. Um, let me see, in nineteen sixty-three-
Buildings.
Um, nineteen sixty- Nineteen sixty-three, the nineteen sixty-three version of the bylaw, which came after the buildings were built. Um. Allowed as a matter of right in the general residence zone, a building for occupancy by a total of three or more families. And even referred to an apartment house. That's in the nineteen sixty-three bylaw. These were actually prior to that. And um, I thought I had the nineteen, uh, prior bylaw, nineteen fifty-six. Nineteen fifty-six bylaw. Uh, didn't have a table of uses, but in the general residence district. Um. It dealt more with the question of. Um. Certain uses that would not be. Uh, otherwise allowed. I'm sorry, it does have, uh, on page five of the nineteen fifty-six bylaw. Uh. In the general residence district. Residents for not more than three families was allowed.
And one more question, David, is a, um, getting back to, and again, let me purpose. I, I think the, the idea is Jack just said, getting the commercial entity out of there and, and going residential is a good thing. But my question is, is a commercial. Uh, use such as a dentist or a medical office allowed in a general residence zone right now?
I think some of them are allowed, uh, grandfathered, um, but I, I don't recall, um. I, give me a moment, let me look it up.
I've got the book here too, David, but that, that's my question. So I'm just, I'm, I'm curious to see, you know, the answer to that, but. Um, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um. Murph, Mr. Murphy, if you want to, any follow up, please?
I don't, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, so reminder, I'll go to you and I will ask if there are any email questions from the public that we know of so far.
It's muted, I don't know.
Reminder, are you muted? I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting any feedback.
No, we haven't received any email questions.
Okay. All right, so if everybody's satisfied, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close.
No, no, no.
Wait, 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 wait. Did you hear that? All right, we do, we actually do have somebody on here. If you could identify yourself, ma'am, please?
Hi, this is, this is Joe Alfieri, Kent Colbert. We live directly from three, three eighty winter. And.
We went to the last meeting.
Yeah, but it sounds like. You're looking at three two-bedroom apartments. Which require nine. You already have all the apartments total on the property. You're saying twelve apartments. With one property, which is legal, nine doors. And that's what you're saying, is this funny parking?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm hearing an echo. I cannot hear the question.
I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting the echo too. It's Mr. Alfieri, if I have the name correct. Could you, uh, are you guys on twice?
Is it better if I mute? Can you still hear an echo?
I do still hear the echo. That, that is a little better if you're not on speaker. Uh, try, try.
So there's twelve existing apartments altogether right now.
Hold on just one second. Let me, let me interrupt. I appreciate. It, it, I'm, I'm being told that you're on twice. Actually, I'm hearing better. I'm being told that you need to hang up at the phone. I'm hearing better from the phone, so. Let's go with it, but do me a favor. Start over again with your name, if you could, please.
Okay.
Name and address.
Joe, Joe Alfieri. Eighty-one street.
He's gonna mute, he's gonna mute one of his things. He's gonna mute either the phone or the computer, because he's still got both.
So do me a favor, mute, mute the computer and speak on the phone if you could.
Okay.
Okay, is this better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry.
All right, so Joe Alfieri and the address.
Candace Colbert, we live across the street at eighty winter. So we're looking, we're looking at the parking situation every day. And there's currently nine apartments. And you're looking to add three more two-bedroom apartments in locations that are currently unvacated and empty. So you're looking to take three empty spots, add nine parking spots. And there's already existing twelve apartments. And. You know, I don't see any way there's enough parking, anywhere near enough parking. Uh, for all those apartments. And that's, that's a huge. Uh, issue of concern. And Candace?
Also, going to the last meeting, Mr. Millville, I think you have that right. That they were concerned that it was never legal for them to have the. The, the use of the four in a three zone. And that's why it got kind of thrown out last time, I believe, in the fall of two thousand eighteen. Um, I understand that there are some that are kind of not in use right now, and it's. Already a full parking lot. So if you go to cramming in two-bedroom units. And most people will want two extra cars, it's going to be very, very tight. And I feel as if it's been rather. Um, they've had decades worth of making extra money because of zoning, uh. Uh. Leniencies, I guess, would be a, a word. Um, so I don't see that this would be the time when it's known that it wasn't compliant. And this stretch of Winter Street, you have residents. Take, you know, care of their property. They're doing the right thing. Um, ideally, it would be nice if this. Owner of these apartment buildings might invest more into the people staying there. Perhaps I see people walking out with their laundry baskets. Because they don't have a place to do their laundry. I don't see that their landscape. Is anything special that could be investing in that and making Norwood that triangular area there. Uh, more beautiful, um, instead of looking for the dollar.
Thank you. Okay. Uh. All right, I, I, I hear you on that. David, let me just clarify something, David Hearn, if I could. Dave, you did say with what you're asking, you do provide for the number of parking spaces needed, which would be twenty-three in total?
Twenty-two are required, uh, twenty-one are required, we have twenty-two. Um, and. That answers the question.
Twenty-one, twenty-one are required in a. Uh, including, including what you're asking for, and you have twenty-three? Is that what you're saying?
Twenty-one are required, we have twenty-two. We have one more.
Okay. All right, um.
Just as a matter of. Mr. Chairman, just a matter of clarification that, uh, the G-zone, David, there's no dentist. Nothing is allowed there. Is that correct?
What, I'm sorry, Mr. Malville?
To answer my question regarding if you could reopen that dental office in a G-zone, am I reading this correctly in the, the office uses?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't dispute with you, Mr. Malville. That the, um. If we had a new use, but if we had a pre-existing use, if we had a, a use that was not abandoned, then I think we could have continued that. Um. And, and, uh, you know, not enough time has passed for this to be considered discontinued or abandoned. That's not the issue before us, um, and I, I, I would agree with you, though, that normally you couldn't have in that district. Uh, that type of use nowadays. You could back in the nineteen sixties with a special plan. Can't find that they got one, can't find that they didn't, because the problem never. Uh, became a serious issue after nineteen seventy-three. Never enforced, suggests that there, that it was solved. I'd rather respond to the comments that were just made. Um, if, if, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me to, not to put off Mr. Malville, but I, I agree with you, Mr. Malville, that nowadays you couldn't have those uses in there. I agree with you on that a hundred percent.
Before you answer the other questions, David, and again, I'm sorry, I'm a thousand questions here, but it, it just leads me down a path of just. Uh, just more inquisitiveness on this. Is now that we're under a fourth unit on a three-family or a four-unit building. Does not the applicant or does not this proposal have to comply with lot area and frontage?
No, we're not changing it. No, uh, we don't, no, no, the structure of the buildings is not changing. And therefore, the, uh, lot area coverage. Um, is not changing in any respect. The, uh, lot sizes, the, the, the plan was approved back in nineteen sixty-two, I believe. And signed off by Walter Ryan, who then had the responsibility for signing off on plans. And that plan is dated nineteen, June of nineteen sixty-two. And it was endorsed on behalf of the planning board by Walter Ryan Town Engineer.
I'll, I'll close with this. So I guess what you're asking the board gave it in the town to approve is to expand a non-conformity that's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Is that the explanation?
That's what it is. And, and Mr. Malville, exactly, that's what we're asking for. This is a property that does not have a parking problem. Um, it is, uh, my clients. Um, the suggestion that they're making extra money all this time, uh, is a suggestion that really doesn't, there's no basis. In fact, the town has made more money because the town has taxed it. Uh, on commercial tax rates, at least as to part of the property all these years. The assessors have taxed it that way.
And on that, on that same vein, David, as you've done in another application on a commercial use. If in fact the board grants the approval. And we find at a later date that there is a parking issue there and there's spillover on Wash, uh, on Winter Street. Um. Does the board have the right to revoke the approval?
I'm not going to give the board legal advice. Mr. DeLuca's quite capable of doing that. But, uh, you, you have generally reserved the right to modify decisions on the motion of an applicant. As is coming later on this evening, uh, or on the, uh, on your own motion if circumstances warrant. And if there is a violation of the parking requirements, the building inspector and the police department can enforce it. I don't believe parking's allowed on Winter Street on that section. I drive that section quite regularly. I don't think it's allowed. Um, but the fact is that there's no history of parking problems overflowing from that property onto any other area. Uh, and we, we have sufficient parking, more than sufficient.
All right, well, good, well, good. It sounds like Murph, you said you had nothing?
Nothing, nothing further.
Further. All right, uh, Mr. Alfieri, if you're still on there, could you do me one more favor? Could you just identify the female that is with you, please?
Sure, that's, that's my wife, Candace Colbert.
Okay.
We, we get on the house together.
Right, A R L V E R T.
Um, and also, uh, David Hearn, some of those places are currently empty. So the argument that everything, the parking is great now, some of them have been empty for a long time.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my clients are telling me that's not accurate.
Okay, well, I mean.
We have occasional vacancies, but, uh, we haven't had any parking problems.
The only thing, the dentist isn't there.
The dentist is not there. That's a real vacancy, Mr. Chairman. The dentists aren't there.
That's only, that's only been since March, is that correct?
Dr. Aaron retired in March. Uh, I think the other one may have been vacated sooner. Uh, 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 not as, not as recently. Um. But again, I suggest that if you compare the activity with the dentist's office with, uh, compare that with, um, somebody living there in a, in a two-bedroom apartment, you're gonna find. That there's a lot less activity, a lot less. Lot less needed.
Well, that's, that's, that's your opinion. That's your opinion. We live across the. All right, I can't, I'm not gonna, I, I tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. I've, I've heard your. I've heard your input from, from eighty Winter Street, and I appreciate it, thank you. Um, reminder, are there any more emails or questions from the public, or is there anybody else on here that would like to be heard?
Hold on, let me just.
And eighty winter, we're looking at that, just for the record, we, you, you. Your input was certainly taken into consideration, just, just so you know.
May I just ask, uh, Mr. Hearn? How many units are currently empty and have been empty? And for how long they have been empty?
Mr. Chairman, parking requirements relate to the number of units and the number of bedrooms. They don't relate to the number of vacancies. Uh, and we conform to the requirements of the bylaw. That's the answer that I have on the matter. Beyond that, it's not really, it's not really anybody's business, I think, how many, uh, of our tenants come and go.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Candace, hold on one minute, please. I, I think I can answer the question that you have. I believe it was rectified, I believe it was clarified that the vacancies. Are of the dentist's office, one who left in March and one who left shortly thereafter that.
No, before.
That does it. Pardon?
I'll correct that, Mr. Brady. The, the, um, the, the space at number, um, thirty-four has been vacant for some time. I don't know how long, but longer than March. That's, that's for sure.
Um, I, I guess why I bring it up is that if you, you say it's nobody's business, but you're using it as an argument. Saying that there's not a parking issue currently. And yet you will not. Uh, acknowledge that there have been some apartments that have been long-term not in use. So the parking is going to exponentially. Uh. Be an issue.
All right, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of my clients, I can answer that there have not been a number of apartments vacant on a long-term basis. That, that's not what they want, and it's not what they've experienced. So I, I'm sorry, um, if, uh, the neighbor disagrees with us on that. But my clients are in possession of the facts relating to the occupancy, um, in a much better position to be in possession of those facts, and those are their facts.
These are facts that you stated back in two thousand eighteen. It was not something hearsay or anything I observed. It was what you stated back in two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, this is an entirely different application from two thousand eighteen. I think it's grounded on a different. Uh, aspect of the bylaw, and I'd ask you to decide it under section five point two, if you would. And if you feel the need to give relief under, with respect to the parking, but I think. We conform to the parking requirements. If you think it's useful or necessary to give relief under six point one point twelve. We've asked for that also. Um, we have more than sufficient parking for the site. The people who occupy these apartments don't have multiple cars as a general rule. They rent these apartments because they're convenient to transportation, to their work. Um, and they. They, we, we've not had a problem with parking. If we had a problem with parking, we would have heard from the building department and the police department. And. From my knowledge, the knowledge of my clients, we haven't had any problems with either.
All right, Dave, I'm, I'm satisfied with your answer. I, I don't have a way of moving what your client is saying or what their neighbors are saying, so. I, I, we're gonna move on. Okay? Uh, so if there's, I'm being told that there's no other emails or questions in regards to this matter. If there's no other follow up from the board, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll move.
Second, uh, motion. Motion by Pat Malville to close, seconded by Jack Perry. All those in favor? I gotta do a roll call vote, so Phil, do you vote in favor of the closure?
Yes.
Jack votes in favor of it, Paki votes in favor of it, Murph votes in favor, uh, I'm sorry, Murph, how do you vote? Sorry to tell you what to do.
Yes.
That's very funny. Got carried away there for a minute. And I'll vote to close as well. Uh, so if we have any discussion from the board going forward, uh, we'll start you with you, Phil.
Uh, I'm satisfied with the presentation that I've heard. And I would be prepared to, uh, uh, vote if, if my other colleagues are.
Okay, thank you. Jack, please?
Yeah, I feel the same as Phil. I think we've got enough information to judge, make a judgment on it.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
I, I agree with, um, uh, Mr. Riley, Mr. Perry. I think it's, uh, it's a very unique situation down there, and it's more of a. I don't want to belittle the term housekeeping issue, but it really is something that we, you know, with the, the, uh. How did this happen question looming over its head. It's here in front of us and, uh. Um. I've got enough information.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Murphy, is any, uh, any? Questions or, uh, further discussion?
No, no further discussion.
Right, I, I'm satisfied with everything I've heard too, so I'll, I'll also, I'll entertain a motion, uh, going forward from anybody.
So I'll also, I'll entertain a motion going forward from anybody. Is there a motion to approve? Or is there a mo...?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Mr. Perry, motion seconded by Mr. Mulvihill. So I have to again do a roll call vote on each one of these. So Phil, how do you vote, please?
Are we voting right now simply on the conversion and not the parking?
I'll do the, I'll do them separately if you'd like, sure. Then we'll just, yeah, I'll just do the...
Whether it multiple requests, it might be well.
Okay, yeah, good point. Thank you. So I'll go on the special parameters for the conversion. And help me on this one, if I'm right. It's pursuant to section 5.2.
That's right, that's what I see.
And Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think you, as part of it, if you are inclined to approve it, you are going to be, you're being asked to make a finding that it will not, that it will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing use. And Mr. Riley, I think, agrees with that, that that's what you're being... Okay.
So do you still want to vote on it separately, Phil, or do you want to put them both together?
I think we should do it separately, because one reason I think that is we may decide with respect to the parking that based on the presentation, that there is no need for relief because there's compliance. So I think it makes sense to do them separately.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, so going forward. So just on the conversion for the properties in question, pursuant to section 5.2, Phil, how do you vote on that?
I would vote to approve.
Jack, how do you vote on it? Thank you.
Approve.
Pat?
Approve.
And Scott?
Approve.
And I'll approve it as well. So I'm going to vote, that's a five to nothing vote. In regards to relief, if required, from the parking requirements applicable to the premises pursuant to section 6.1.12, are there any questions from the board in furtherance to that? Phil, starting with you.
My comment is, as far as I'm concerned, I'm persuaded by the applicant's presentation that they comply with the parking requirements and that the question is probably moot and we probably don't need to address it.
Hey, Jack?
I agree with Phil.
Pat?
I agree.
Scott?
I agree, but I would also say we should probably table that or not hear it, because if something comes up later that, in fact, that, you know, that the parking is not appropriate, we don't want to have given him relief for something that's not appropriate. I think we should leave it, leave it unapproved.
Okay, if you want to make a motion to table that, you're welcome to do so. I'll do that first.
I would, I would make a motion to table the parking issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we'd like a final decision. So if the board feels it's not necessary, we can withdraw the request for parking relief if the board agrees that it's not necessary. And that's what I understand the comments to be. We would withdraw the request under section 6.1.12. And then, that way, your vote on the other matter becomes a, I'd rather that become a final decision than not have something appear to be still pending before the board. We'll withdraw that application.
I think that's an appropriate way to proceed by way of withdrawal.
Yeah, that's probably your best bet, and that matter can be taken up.
Then I withdraw my motion if it's been, if it's been, the application's been withdrawn, I withdraw my objection.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we formally request that the board allow a withdrawal without prejudice with respect to the relief requested under section 6.1.12. I think we need a formal withdrawal approved by the board, and I would ask that you make it without prejudice, in case we have to come back.
Nope, I have no problem with that. Yeah, that was, that was my next step, no problem, as I'm getting told by my administrative assistant as well. But all right, so this is what we'll, so officially, I'll entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the parking issue under section 6.1.12, if somebody would like to do that.
Without prejudice.
I'll make the motion since I raised the issue.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Murph. And this is certainly without prejudice, David, no problem. Okay, so I do have a motion on the floor and seconded in regards to withdrawing, the applicant being allowed to withdraw section 6.1.2, the parking issue. Phil, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Jack?
Motion to approve.
Pat?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And I will, too. So that's a five to nothing vote in regards to allowing the withdrawal. So I believe, do we have to? We don't have to go back and revisit 5.2 because it's already been approved, correct, Phil?
Yes, I think we're all set.
Okay, so I believe, I believe we're all done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I have my client available for the next matter. Could I ask for a, just a two-minute cleaning, with all due respect to my clients here, cleaning of the table as they leave and the other applicant comes into the room, for just two minutes? I'm, I'll go offline.
But before we do that, could I ask everybody to very carefully mute their computers, get up, stretch, take a break, whatever you have to do, and we'll reconvene in two minutes, please? All right, there you go, Jack. I got you now, buddy. Can you hear me?
I hear you loud and clear.
I'm back.
All right, perfect, perfect. Let's take a quick roll call, and then we'll get started on the second. Phil, you can hear me all right, buddy?
I'm here. I'm here.
All right, Jack can hear me. Pat, you all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, and Scott Murphy. Scott Murphy, Patrick Mulvihill, Jack Perry, Phil Riley, and myself, Thomas Brady, for the board. Attorney David Hearn, representing the clients for Sixteen High Street, if I can get started on that. Notice is hereby given to the Board of Appeal in regards to Sixteen High Street in the General Residence District. The applicant requests a special permit under section 5.4 and 5.4.4 of the zoning bylaw to allow an alteration of an existing two-family dwelling on a lot having less area, frontage, and less lot width than required in the General Residence District to permit the construction and maintenance of a stairway that will encroach upon the rear yard setback area so as to provide a second means of egress for the second-floor apartment and said dwelling. This application requests a variance under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to allow construction and maintenance of the stairway within the rear yard setback area as to provide a second means of egress for the second-floor apartment, according to section 4.0 of the zoning bylaws. Plans are on file with the ZBA and may be due during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight to four. With that being said, Dave, if you want to, went to explanation, I do, for the record, I do have the the affidavit, and I do have the news notifications, I believe, for the same dates of... I hope I get this right, because I don't have it in front of me, April 9th and April 16th?
April 9th, April 16th, and then a third notice, April 23rd. The last two gave the go-to-meeting reference. That's correct. It was published three times.
Okay, great. Appreciate that, Dave. Go ahead with this, please.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record, let me introduce myself again. David Hearn Jr., offices at 470 Washington Street. I am an attorney, representing Barbara Ann Kelly, who was with me in the room but not on camera. Ms. Kelly owns the property at Sixteen High Street here in Norwood. Her family has owned that property for roughly 100 years. It is a two-family dwelling, and she is in the midst of making some improvements to it that will upgrade certain aspects of it, particularly with respect to electrical, with respect to access or egress from the property. And in the course of that, it's been determined that she needs some relief from the zoning board in order to provide the second means of egress, as she proposes to do and as it's been recommended. She engaged a experienced contractor from the area to do the work on the house. She's also engaged an architect to draw the plan for the staircase. What we have, and I think up on the board, is the plan, and Ms. Morgan has just put it up for us. We have an existing house that conforms to the setback requirements. The house itself conforms in terms of front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks. It, the lot itself is non-conforming in that it's 9,115 square feet in a district that would normally require 10,000 square feet. But that's the size of the lot, and lots in that neighborhood are often not much bigger than that. The reason we're requesting relief is that in order to build the staircase as it's been recommended and to preserve access to and from the basement of the house with an existing bulkhead in the rear of the house, we need to move the stairway out from the house a little bit so that the bulkhead is kept clear. Now, there are different ways you can put a stairway on this house. You could put it off the side, but then it would be visible, more visible to the neighbors and visible from the street. If you put it where the bulkhead is, you lose the bulkhead, and therefore you lose your access and egress from the basement. That's not a good thing. So by putting it where it's proposed, it encroaches into the rear setback, which is 30 feet in that district. And it increases, encroaches rather, by less than six feet. The measurement from the nearest point of the proposed staircase to the nearest point of the rear line is 24.22 feet. So it's less than six feet of encroachment, and it's only encroaching, not with the building, but just with the staircase that comes out with a landing at the second-floor level. You get out and parkway, a landing that then turns. Minor encroachment into the property. I cast this in the application and in the memo that I submitted to you as both relief requested of the special permit and relief under variance. If, I'm not sure that, in a strict analysis, that relief under section 5.4 would apply because we don't have a structure that actually is non-conforming. The lot is non-conforming, but not the structure. And so I think that we really have to look at this as requesting a variance to allow the construction and maintenance of that stairway within the setback area. And I've given you the arguments in my memo for why this would be appropriate in this case. We're talking about a house that was built about 1880. As I said, my client's family has owned it for about 100 years. It's been a two-family house. There's an error on the plan that calls it a single-family, but I only noticed that last week. I think that's because the engineer didn't, all he was doing was measuring and drawing the lot. He is not involved in the project itself. But they have owned this property, and the way the building is located on the site and the relationship of the building to the boundaries and to the neighboring parcels, it makes sense, and it really leads us to one solution, that the only place to put this second means of egress for the second-floor apartment is off the rear of the house. Now, to do that without infringing on the rear setback area, you would have to spend an awful lot of money and relocate the bulkhead. And I'd hate to see a project like that and cutting into a foundation on an old house. That would be very expensive and probably would not make sense. Or you'd have to have the staircase come out into the side yard of the property. That would not be attractive for the neighbors, would not be attractive for the house itself to have a staircase sticking off the back when there's another way to do it. We suggest that this can be done without detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the bylaw. It's a minor encroachment. It's less than six feet. It's not going to create any overcrowding. It's not going to have loss of light or air or anything like that. Not really going to increase density. It's not going to increase density in terms of the use of the property. But it is going to allow Ms. Kelly to update the property to bring it into more compliance with current building codes and safety codes by providing a second means of egress, as well as the other types of improvements she's making in the property. Electrical is one that comes to mind in my discussions with her. So I think you can look at it under section 5.4, but I think it's probably more correct to look at it under the variance request that we made. And I think this is a very good case for consideration of variance as a reasonable alternative to not having a second means of egress and not being able to conform to current codes for egress and safety purposes. Happy to take any questions, Mr. Chairman, but that is the case, as we're presenting it to you.
Okay, Dave, the only, let me, before we get to... Before we get, before we move on, I do have to point out what I think is a technical error, unfortunately, which is, in the middle of this plan, it says "existing single-family house number 16", which would be the property in question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a two-family house. Am I right?
It is a two-family. It's assessed as a two-family. It's been a two-family, I don't want to say forever, but as long as Ms. Kelly and her, as long as you've known, and she's over 30, I have to say, and has been going to this house for a long time, it's been her family's home. As I said, and I'll try to clarify.
I'm all right with that. I'll interrupt you real quick. It's not going to, it's not going to end the proceeding. The issue is, is, you know, regardless of what the outcome is, especially if it goes in your favor, I'm just going to need a revised plan with the technical typo taken out of there.
If the board sees fit to approve this, we can, you can do it. I'd ask you to do it with a condition that we substitute for the plan of rec, as the plan of record, one that says "existing two-family house".
Right, that's it, that's what we're doing.
But this...
Okay, so we'll go through it. I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I can finalize the decision, but...
Well, I'll suggest, Mr. Chairman, you could, if you vote...
I get it. You'll be all right. You'll be all right. We can approve it. I just need the, I need the revision ASAP. If it goes in your favor, I need the revision ASAP prior to the decision being finalized.
That's fine.
Okay, just for the, just so you know. But anyways, all right, so move on, please.
That is it, Mr. Chairman, in terms of what we're asking for. Relief so that we, a slight encroachment into the rear yard for a staircase that's needed to provide a second means of egress for the second-floor apartment. That's, this is the most cost-effective and most reasonable way of putting that. And I think from an aesthetics point of view, it probably is better than other approaches that Ms. Kelly could take without seeking relief, but which might be less desirable.
And just for the record, and I believe you said, and if I'm reading it correctly, it's less than six feet?
That's correct. The measurement from the corner of the staircase, the nearest point of the staircase to the rear yard is 24.22 feet, when 30 feet would be required. So the encroachment is just less than six feet.
I got it. Okay, thank you for that. Phil, why don't we go to you first for any comments or questions, please?
Thank you.
And remember, remind us, excuse me, Phil, you can take that down, please, remind us. Thank you.
Is there a hedge that runs along the back of the property?
There is.
And that's with somewhat obscure, at least part of the view, I would imagine, for the houses over on Prospect Street, to some extent.
That's Prospect Ave. There is a wall, and there's a, any kind of edge in front of the stone wall. And there are some trees in that area, too.
I agree that the variance procedure looks like the appropriate way to go. And I would suggest that the, given the way the rear lot line runs at the angle that it does, I think there may be some grounds in this case to suggest that the shape of the property is the particular aspect of it that we might hang our hat on in terms of allowance of a variance. We don't often get a case coming in that really looks as though it might apply, but this case looks to me as though we could proceed in that fashion. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I agree with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Jack, any points or questions?
Yeah, that, of course, the first thing I picked up was the uh exist, you know, the note, I don't want to go over it again, but the existing single-family and uh looking for the egress for the second floor. I don't have a floor plan of the second floor because I'm wondering if a stairway could be placed on the side. And without a uh layout of the second floor, it's hard to judge. I mean, this is just someone's uh idea of what to do, and it would be good, uh, not that it's a major issue, but I always like to see if things can work to the zoning that's uh applicable. Um, is there, do you know, David, if there is a floor plan of that second floor?
We, uh, the the second floor, the the room that is um being proposed to put the door in uh is a room that could be used as a bedroom or as a study or uh anything else, it is a room in the uh rear uh of the um of it, I'm looking for, Barbara, this is the, so where is the, point to the? Tell me which.
It's right. Just the staircase, here, it's right here.
Yeah, back there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no, that's the basement, okay. So it's had a window in what is now used as a um as a bedroom. There is a sloped roof on the side of the house as you look at it in the rear. Um, on the side of the house, the right side of the house, as you look at it from the street, uh, it's the um, to the, the back section of that of the house has a sloped roof uh over the first floor. Over the, on the left-hand side, where there is also a driveway, there is a flat roof. Uh, putting a staircase there is going to disturb the people who occupy that section of the first floor. Um, and so the architect's recommendation was uh put it coming off the back. It's not going to disturb anybody in the first floor, and it's going to be out of sight from the street. Um, it's, it is um uh, kind of an unusual layout here, uh, but that that is the situation we have, and that's what makes sense. I mean, I do have some architect's drawings of what it would look like. Um, and I'm looking at the sloped roof on one side and the flat roof on the other, which goes right over um, the uh, the first floor um, uh, living area. Uh, so to have a walkway over them would not be considered desirable. That's why we're doing it this way.
Well, uh, all I have, you know, of course, is the uh site plan.
Right.
Which was in the back it, and I just thought if that stairway could go to the right a little further, again, I don't know, there's a, I think you said there was a roof, a low roof in there?
There's a slope, yes, um, if you were looking at the rear elevation of the house, there is a sloped roof coming off the the back gable of the uh, of the second floor, so it's a sloped roof all the part of the first floor part. Um, and so it's not suitable for putting a staircase over that way. Uh, it it simply wouldn't work. Um, and uh, that's on the rear, and on the other side, on the driveway side, which, looking from the street, is on the left, that has a flat roof over the living area of the um, of the first floor apartment. So.
Where is the, there's no driveway shown on uh.
The driveway is left-hand side.
See the garage?
There's an existing garage.
Okay.
And, and the driveway leads up to it there.
Is that, and that's coming off High Street?
Coming off from High Street to the garage in the back, that's on the site plan.
No, so there's no projection on the twenty-three point six four dimension to the, looking at the uh site plan, to the right side, that that's all wide open. And I just thought, see, without a floor plan, it's hard to.
I understand, that's a sloped roof, Mr. Perry.
That doesn't matter.
That projection on that side is a sloped roof uh that is only uh one, one-plus stories high. It's not, it doesn't go to the second floor.
All right, but but that's not shown on the site plan, which you probably wouldn't anyway.
Well.
So I have to read an awful lot into it, and and obviously my first uh um, opinion was, why can't that move to the right or come down a little bit and not need any issues and just get a building permit? But it's, again, it's hard for me to judge it with a a second floor plan.
No, we're, I'm sorry, Ms. Perry, we we didn't file the floor plans, and frankly, when we filed this, we thought we'd all be in the same room, able to review this together, but uh uh, we we can't do that. Um, I mean, if, Chairman, if the board wants, I can submit the architectural plans. If the board thinks it's necessary to do that, uh, I could submit them through Ms. Morgan, and you could uh consider this at some other time, but, or if you think you don't need them, whatever you want, is fine with us.
Well, I'll go on.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Jack, you can repeat what you just said, please.
No, I was just gonna say, I'll go along with what the board uh wishes to do, but I just thought the site plan, uh, you you're trying to do something architectural. And I obviously have to go to, my brain goes that way. And looking at a site plan, I just thought it might be another way to do it, that's all. And I don't have a plan to change my mind, that's all.
All right, appreciate that, Jack. Um, yeah, it, it, point taken for certain. Uh, Dave, just a suggestion, it probably, at some point, it would be a good idea to get uh a a floor plan in for the record, just in case anyone else has questions of it, or if any of the board members uh want to look at it after the fact. But um, Pat, if we can move on to you, please.
Yeah, uh, David, it's a uh, obviously, it's a legal two-family.
It is.
And currently there, the egress for the second floor is where?
There's only one down through the front hall, the front stairs. We need a second.
Has it been an illegal two-family?
Well, it's legal, yes, it is a legal two-family, and it's legal in terms of the, what was required when the house was built in eighteen eighty and maybe during subsequent improvements. But Ms. Kelly is making improvements now that um implicate some of the more modern requirements of the the code, particularly with respect to safety, and that's why she has to add second means of egress for the second floor apartment.
Is she being compelled to do this, or is she doing this of her own free will?
Is she what?
She being compelled to do this by the town or anybody or insurance company or uh what what is you, what started this fall and why, you know, it's been fine, no problem inside, but.
We've been, she's been informed that the building department wants this in con, in connection with the improvement she's making to the house, that it needs a second means of egress.
Which it does.
Yeah, which it does, but how did that come about?
And she was applying for permits with respect to the improvement she's making to the house. We're doing electrical work, um, updating, general updating. General updating in the house, including electrical work, this question came up. Where's, where's the second means of egress?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat, uh, Murph, do you have anything to add or question, please?
Yes, um, David, you said, I mean, I I usually agree with Mr. Riley on these things about variances. This is, this is really, I consider to be borderline, um, even with your, even with your well-drafted memo. But I will say, you indicated when you made your presentation, that you, they could put it on the side, it just was an aesthetic difference. Um, so getting back to Mr. Perry's issue, you can actually put these stairs on the right-hand, is it the right-hand side you're talking about? Just wouldn't be as aesthetically nice?
You you can't put it over the roof on the right-hand side. Uh, could you put it out into the middle of the yard, the right hand yard, maybe, uh, without, um, I I guess we'd have to do calculations to see if it's going to encroach upon any side yard setback over there. Uh, that setback, I think, is fifteen feet, we've got twenty-three feet. This is a fourteen-foot stretch of stairway, so it might end up violating the side yard over there. The thought was, put it in the back, it's it's less visible, out of the way, and um, yeah, aesthetics are a concern.
No, I I understand, I understand, it's, it looked, it would, it's aesthetically more pleasing, because that's what you said. What about on the left-hand side? How does it interfere with the first floor apartment if it goes down the, out the left-hand side? Because that's twenty-seven point six feet, which is clearly going to be enough for the, with the set, for the setback.
Except you've got a driveway there.
Right, but the driveway, the dri, it would be up against the side of the house instead of having to go down and around, right?
No, you can't go against the side of the house for a couple of reasons. One, there's already a stairway there on the side of the house going into the first floor, is that correct, Barbara? That's shown on the site plan. Um, beyond that, uh, you've got a um uh, you've got the driveway right there that leads up to that garage. You can't put it, have it come down right in the middle of the driveway. Uh, and uh, the the, the part of the roof that sticks out, uh, where that um, first uh access to the first floor, the side door is shown, that's a flat roof over living space. They're trying to avoid uh putting it there because uh, for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's, it would be disturbing to the people down below. Number two, anytime you start building things over an existing roof, you run the risk that you're going to pierce the membrane, you're going to pierce the um, the roofing uh and have leaks, um, and that's often the problem when you're building roof decks or roof walkways. So.
Right.
Uh, the recommendation of the architect was go off the back and uh keep it out of the way. A slight encroachment, so left-hand side, you run into the driveway, right-hand side, you're likely to run into the um into the uh side yard setback over there.
So when you said it was just aesthetic reasons, that really, you think there's, it's more than that now, you?
Well, no, I I also, I also said, uh, Mr. Murphy, that um, putting it closer to the house in the rear would run afoul of the existing bulkhead, eliminating uh and any, and that type of.
No, I know, I I heard that, I'm just talking about when you said you could put it up to the side, but you prefer not to because it wouldn't be as aesthetically pleasing, it wouldn't be as good, it wouldn't be a good, as good a result.
Yeah, you're gonna put it off.
Are you saying now that that's not even gonna make it a setback, is that?
I'm not sure that it's gonna get the setbacks, because looking at this, it may very well encroach into that fifteen-foot requirement.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's too hard to judge with the plan that's been submitted, that's all. And I I think there's probably other ways of doing it. The driveways aren't even shown, and I guess there is one. And if you go to the back of the house where the stairs are to the right, is that uh, there's a fourteen-foot dimension by four foot, the, well, almost five feet wide, what is that? Is that a shed or?
No, the fourteen-foot dimension, that's the bottom half of the staircase. The staircase is L-shaped, comes out from the house and then turns left, took them down into the yard.
Okay.
The driveway.
So where's the driveway, on the right side of the house?
No.
Looking at the plan?
Left-hand side. Where the garage is.
That would make sense. I don't know, I just think there there might be another way to do it, but I'll go along with the board.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the board wants us to file the floor plans, we can certainly do that. Uh, normally, you know, we we don't see that as being important, but I think some members feel it might be important in the consideration of this case, we can give you a set of the floor plans or several sets, or I can email them to um Ms. Morgan, and she can send them out to you. Um.
Well, I just like to think it can conform to zoning, that's all. I don't think that's asking too much.
Uh, it certainly isn't. Dave, I tell you, I tell you what I'm gonna do, just to make, I I don't see it being a a huge issue, okay? But with the fact that, no, 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 I don't see it being a huge issue, but with one of the board members just being certainly uncomfortable with it as is, why don't I do this, okay? For the, for the risk of minimally inconvenience you, inconvenience your clients, okay? I am going to consider, and I I will certainly entertain a motion to continue this for two weeks, and you will be the first hearing on May nineteenth at seven PM, as to give you time to update the plot plan to show the driveway, it shouldn't, it's a, it's a simple correct. Also, correct that wording, single-family hall, as as minor as it is, I have a problem with that. Correct that to a two-family, and then submit the the uh floor plans. And then I think that should solidify everything, if if, as far as I'm concerned. But hopefully that'll ease everybody else's concerns as well. So if if, and if if everyone's all right, I mean, if anybody wants to uh recommend a a motion to continue, just to get that done, uh, I'll entertain that at this time.
Well, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, what time would it be on uh?
It would be at seven PM on May nineteenth.
And where?
I assume we're gonna do the video again. Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, let's go with, yeah, let's go, let's go with the assumption that it's gonna be done virtually. If not, everybody will be notified well in advance. And if you could get that in, I would say probably by the twelfth at the latest, please.
All right, file on the twelfth, we'll do that.
All right, so I'm look, I'm looking for an updated plot plan to show the driveway, to correct it to a two-family, where it's listed as a, as a single, and if you could submit the floor plans as well, just so everybody can be on the same page and more comfortable with everything.
That's fine.
Please. Okay, so do I have that motion on the floor to continue?
Go on.
Okay, so it's, uh, the motion's on the floor by Pat Mulverhill, seconded by?
Seconded, seconded.
Okay, thank you, by, uh, seconded by Jack Perry. Uh, Phil, I gotta do a roll call vote, you in favor of the continuance to May, May nineteenth at seven PM?
I don't think it's remotely necessary, I think we're making a whole lot out of this case that we don't need to make. Seems to me that uh, that uh, Mr. Herron has uh appropriately indicated the best place to put it. It's a minor variance, it appears to be justified by the real lot line. I don't think we need any of this, but if the board wants to do that, why I'll go along with it.
Hey, Jack, how do you feel?
Well, I, I mean, I guess. You had the board concerned. We've got a site plan that's not totally complete. I don't, you know, it doesn't, it should show a driveway for one thing, and I will make a site visit. Definitely, I have not done that, and I've been out of town for quite a while. But I will make a site plan, uh, site visit. And uh, like I said, just based on the information that was given, I just have a lot of questions, that's all.
Okay, so do you, you vote in favor of? For the record, for the continuance?
Do I?
I might have lost, yes, do you, Jack?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, Pat?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, and Scott Murphy, please.
Yeah, yes.
All right, myself as well. Dave, sorry to be tedious, and I, we apologize, I apologize to your clients in regards to it. But as you, we'd, we'd rather get it right and have everybody on board a hundred percent. All right, so the the uh motion is approved, and the case is continued to May nineteenth at seven PM.
And it will be uh virtual media, go-to-meeting like we've done tonight.
Yes, it will be, uh, Phil, you're clarifying that you're a yes vote for the continuance?
I'm sorry?
Can you just clarify that you're a yes vote for the continuance, please?
Yeah, I'll vote, you know, a little yes, I don't, I think it's unnecessary, but I'm not going to oppose it.
Right, okay, all right, appreciate that, thank you. And uh, all right, so Dave, we'll do it two weeks and and solidify everything. And uh, just for the record, if you can please update the plot plan to show the driveway, correct it to a two-family instead of the single-family, and submit the floor plans as well.
We'll get the additional information to the uh secretary uh by the twelfth.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right.
All right, Dave, thank you very much. All right, so if everybody could stay on, I think Dave's probably gonna turn off. Um, we do have one more case, it's a modification. Just um, find my sheet, sorry. That's it, it's, all right, everybody's still, uh, just for the official for the roll call, it's uh Phil Riley, Jack Perry, it's uh, Patty, Pat Mulverhill, and Scott Murphy, myself, Thomas Brady. Uh, it's a zoning board case eighteen dash twelve, Mr. Bobowski, you on the uh, are you on the air here? Reminded, you know if we have uh Tony Bobowski?
He's here.
He's here, but he's not, he's, he's, he's turning his uh volume up.
Mark, if you heard that, if you could, if you can hear me, if you could turn, if you can turn your volume up, Mark, just a little so we can hear you.
He's talking, but it's not coming through.
This is, uh, Mark, can you double check and make sure your screen's not muted?
Yeah, we can see him, he's talking, but not hearing him.
Wondering if he can hear me?
He can. He's nodding his head yes.
Okay. Mark, for some reason I'm not getting audio from you. I, I can't see you either. I don't care about seeing you. For some reason I'm not getting, I'm ju, I'm not getting an audio from you. Can you, can you possibly take a, uh, double check your screen, maybe uh, turn your volume up, whatever the case may be?
And Tom, Mr. Chair, Attorney DeLuca's actually on the lot, he's here too.
Oh, I knew, I knew that, okay.
Okay.
Dave, do you wanna check your connection and you, can, can you hear me and can I hear you? See, I can't, I can't hear uh, David either.
Uh, no, we can't hear David, but David's, Mike is lit up, green.
Okay, well, let's, let's just uh, all right, Dave, I'll, I'll uh, I'm gonna, Dave, Bobo, uh, Mark, I'm sorry, Mark Bobowski, I'm gonna have to try one more time to get a, to get a hold of you. Can you, can you reconnect and you disconnect and reconnect? Maybe that'll, that'll solve the issue?
Looks like he's calling back in, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I can see Mr. Roach. I think Mr. Roach is properly connected. I just don't have uh, Mr. Bobowski yet.
Mr. Chair, we also have caller three and caller seven who are, who are on but are muted. I don't know who they are.
I'm not sure. I mean, if they wanna talk, we'll identify them.
Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, that, that, that's Mr. Bobowski.
Yes, I just got somebody to, some, some notice on my phone that I've just been unmuted, so.
Okay, that is, is there, Jack, can you hear him all right? Phil and Pat?
Yep.
Great.
Right, somewhat, not, not too well, but somewhat.
Yeah, somewhat awesome.
All right, Mark, let's, let's see how it goes. Why don't you uh, why don't you go, you're coming in for case number eighteen dash twenty-three, eight sixty-two dash eight seventy-eight, Washington Street. Uh, you're looking for a modification. If you want to explain that, we'll, we'll, we'll entertain your explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Mark Bobowski. I represent Jack Roach and uh, the Roach Development, uh, Real Estate Development Company, which is the owner of the subject property in question. Uh, the gentlemen are back this evening to seek a modification. The, the simple uh, modification they seek is a removal of condition number five from the original variance. That condition states, and I quote, "A rental restriction shall be added to the condo association bylaws to allow the rental of no more than one unit per year at any given time." Uh, the reason that they seek this modification is because the market finds itself in complete disarray with the pandemic and they desire to have more flexibility in terms of uh, building and operating the project. Um, I, I noted in my memo that I see now on the board in front of me that the uh, condition was unappealed at the time. That's because uh, frankly, everybody thought rental project was the way it was, I'm sorry, a, a for-sale project was the way it was going to go. Who could have foreseen the way we are today, the way we live today? My wife's a real estate lawyer. She had closings in the pipeline until about May fifteenth, and then after that, frankly, nobody wants to go see a house, tour a house, be with anybody that would show them a house. Uh, a rental property gives, gives the gentleman much more flexibility. Um, I noted in the paragraph, the penultimate paragraph of my memo that the condition, although we accepted it at the time, is probably not legal. There is a case and a Home Rule Amendment provision that says that uh, zoning is not empowered to regulate civil relationships between private parties. Uh, I've quoted section seven five of the Home Rule Amendment. Private or civil law governing civil relationships are not allowed. In the case I provided to you through Ramonda, C H R General versus City of Newton, the Supreme Judicial Court reviewed a Newton ordinance that basically said no one can have a condo. Um, the S J C invalidated that ordinance as regulation of form of ownership. Um, I, I, I would equate what condition number five does to a local bylaw that says all structures, residences in the general residence district must be for sale and cannot be for rent. Obviously, the Attorney General's Office would not accept that. It is a violation of the Home Rule Amendment. And condition five accomplishes much the same goal. Not in any way trying to fault the board for imposing condition five. We accepted it at the time thinking that a rental project would do just fine, uh, that a for-sale project would do just fine. But now we know better based on what's happening in the real world. So I, I would ask the board, give us uh, the benefit of, of removing the condition so we have more flexibility.
Twenty-six mental patterns.
All right, Mark, uh, I appreciate that, that view on it. I'm gonna go first on this, and, and this, this is what I'm gonna allow for this. I'm gonna allow each person uh, on the board to voice their opinion on this. And we've, we've heard from Attorney Bobowski in regards to the request for the modification. So, we're gonna give, we're all gonna give our opinions and then we're gonna vote on it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit this to this part to, to a, to a limited conversation. Okay, so I'm gonna go first, Mark. Mark, I have to wholeheartedly disagree with you. This uh, this was brought uh, in the form, this was brought so, uh, sold to the neighbors and it was brought before the board in regards to the fact that this was gonna be owner occupied. I'm gonna disagree, I'm gonna disagree with you in the fact that you think they were placing a condition on a bylaw where an order, ordinance were not. Uh, this was a condition that was placed on an application for relief, which we are definitely within our rights to do so. You also referenced case C H R versus Newton. When I reviewed that case, and I, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm gonna make that publicly clear, and then I don't pretend to be either, but the one thing I did pick up on was on page two and paragraph three, it quotes, "The ordinance required the owner who wishes to cut, wishes to convert an occupied rental to a condo to be owner occupied, to in turn be owner occupied, it must first file an application for conversion to the fourth." That, that implies that it's occupied rental, that it's already occupied. This is a, this is a new construction. I don't, I gotta be honest with you, I don't believe that C H R versus Newton applies here. It's just my personal opinion. Uh, and that, and that's, that's how I stand. So I'll, I'll move on to, uh, why don't I go to Mr. Riley first, please?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman. But I have another point that I would like to make. This is not a public hearing. This is simply a private meeting. And I would submit that the only modifications that should be addressed in a private meeting are those that are, and we, this is what this board has done for many years. We have dealt only with very minor modifications such as errors of omission and the like that need to be corrected. I submit that this is not a minor modification. I think it is a major modification that very materially changes the outcome and the result in the case. And I think under those circumstances that this would have to be done by way of a hearing and not by way of a private uh, meeting such as this is. Uh, the board, I think, would be excoriated from one end of town to the other if we handled it in that fashion. I might also take note of a publication produced by the attorney for the applicant. And that is Mr. Bobowski's handbook on uh, Massachusetts land use and planning law. And note with respect to his provisions on modifications at three twenty-four in my book, the following appears. This has to do with substantive changes. And he's talking about, the court is talking about, it's the Huntington versus Zoning Board of Appeals apparently. And it says the following. "The board may not make a substantive amendment which changes the result of an original deliberate decision or which grants relief different from that originally granted without compliance with the relevant notice and hearing requirements." And I think that is this case. I think this is clearly a case in which, if we were to do what is now being requested, it would grant relief different from that originally granted. As pointed out by the chairman, and certainly in compliance with my recollection, there were any number of people in addition to the board who were at the hearing who were supportive of this petition, but were done so mainly because it was going to be condominiums and we're replacing a, a use that we did not wanna have continued there. I seriously suspect that if they had come in seeking rental apartments for their whole place, there may have been a different response. Uh, so I think that we should not even deal with the matter at this point. Uh, and we should require the applicant to uh, come in with a full application with all the relevant notice and hearing requirements, give all the people who were there before an opportunity to view and to hear what's being requested and to offer their opinions regarding it. So I think we should not, not take, we should either deny this if they insist upon action tonight, but I think the more proper approach would be to require that the applicant uh, uh, come in with a uh, regular hearing and comply with all the notice and hearing requirements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Perry, please.
Uh, my first uh, opinion, the whole thing, it should be a new application. And I think Phil has mentioned that. And I was under the opinion, and I think our board was, that we were getting condominiums. And I think the town is saturated already with apartments. And I would think uh, at this time, we would have to have a whole new presentation. Simple as that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Perry, please.
That was me.
I'm sorry, I'm in Mr., Mr. Mulvihill, I'm sorry about that.
Are we, are we?
And my deepest apologies, Mr. Perry.
Do, do you want comments? Cause I have a lot to say here, Mr. Chairman, or are we gonna go about the way?
I am, I am, I am. I want, I want everybody's comment, please. Yes.
I'm sitting here in utter shock, to be honest with you, uh, that the fact that uh, this applicant is before us, asking us to accept more rentals in this community when he knows full well that the only way that he got approved was for it to be for ownership. That was it. End of sentence. The neighborhood was behind it. Town fathers were behind it, town groups were behind it, provided it was for sale. And with all due respect, Mr. Bobowski, I'm a Realtor of twenty-five years in the community. Things are selling, things are being shown. Your applicant, the applicant hasn't even marketed these yet. Uh, there's another complex in Norwood uh, that is built on a former Brownfield site, the old Zimbal's factory site that is now in phase three and has actively got some units under agreement that are being constructed. So, to, to use the excuse that we're in the Corona era and uh, we don't know what's happening, it just flies completely flat with me and is disingenuous on its face. I am not gonna sit here and allow this applicant or any other applicant to come in to the Board of Appeal that we voted on and completely try and hoodwink us. And that's what I think is happening here. Is that the applicant is, is basically may have had an ulterior motive from the start that wanted, that wanted rentals because there was no way in God's green earth that he would have been allowed to have apartments in there if he said apartments. He hasn't even marketed these with, I, I haven't seen one piece of literature, one sign on the property saying for sale. And now he's come forward saying that he can't sell them. I, I, I'm dumbfounded. I'm absolutely dumbfounded. And the neighborhood is absolutely irate that the applicant portrayed himself as, okay, yep, we're gonna do this, we're gonna clean a private property up, we're gonna put in these condos, it's gonna be for sale. And now completely just transforms it into an apartment complex or wants to. That's just beyond me. It's beyond me. And it's shameful, to be honest with you. I, I, you know, I had a lot of respect for Mr. Roach, and I know he's in the meeting, but for him to come in here to tell the board and out of the town, when we just got out of a hole spending thirteen million dollars to get rid of forty B and get rid of apartments, and the town spoke loudly and clearly that they didn't want any more apartments in our community. And now he just, he, he, cock once says, okay, listen, you know, things have changed, I want apartments now. If that's the case, then, you know, there was another, two other applicants that we could have uh, approved on the same vein. Mr. Flynn's property down in South Nod, Mrs. Donahue's property that Mr. Flynn was trying to do. And what's to say that the convent now at St. Catherine's Parish that is being developed by a, a developer in Quincy who has a sign on the property, who says coming soon, who says pre-construction prices, who is actively marketing them, what's, what's to say, what's to convert them to co, uh, to apartments? It's just, it's just astonishing and it's just gullible to me and I just, I, I, I'm telling you, I'm against it one thousand percent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mulvihill. Uh, Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I wasn't at the hearing, but I wanna, I, I wanna echo all of your comments, Mr. Riley's, everyone, Mr. Pastor Mulvihill and Mr. Perry.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that being upfront. Uh, Mr. Bobowski, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to one thing in regards to the letter that you wrote us. Uh, you said at the, at the, at the time of the Z B A's decision, the owner expected all of the units for being for sale. Thus, condition number five didn't cause us any concern. That means uh, you agreed to it, where I come from. Okay, and that's, that's how, that's how I'm gonna view it and that's how I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand. Um.
Mr. Chairman. I, I thank the board for their comments. I, I will withdraw the request that we've submitted. Uh, we will talk amongst ourselves to decide whether we don't wanna, wanna come back with a more formal application in accordance with Mr. Riley's statement. And uh, at this point in time this evening, I think the best thing to do would be to withdraw.
Okay, I appreciate that. Appreciate that, Mark. I'll, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to uh, do I even need a motion to withdraw a, a, a modification?
I don't know whether you do, Mr. Chairman, but if you wanna be on the safe side, I'll make such a motion.
Okay, appreciate that. So it's a motion, a motion on the floor to allow the applicant to withdraw the modification request, seconded by?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Perry. All those in favor, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Riley, the yes?
Yes.
Mr. Perry, a yes? Mr. Perry, how do you vote on the withdrawal?
Yes. Yes.
Pat?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so it's a five, five to nothing to allow the applicant to withdraw the request. All right, Mr. Bobowski, appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you, stay safe everybody.
We'll conclude that here and uh, yeah, thank you, you as well, please. Uh, just before we, before we adjourn here, guys, I did, I just want a couple things. It's been a while since we've seen each other. Um, so it, it is great to see you. I, I've spoken to, to a couple of them. Actually, I've spoken to all of you throughout the course of this thing, you know, a couple of times, maybe once or twice regardless. But um, these are definitely trying times and I think it's all been a burden and a, and a uh, a hardship on all of us. Uh, so it's glad to see that everybody's getting through it. I know some of us uh, have personal situations going on um, that, that are adding to the issues.